I'd like to call the Board of Trustees meeting together on Tuesday, August 19th at 6:00 PM. In order for everyone to hear our discussions and comments, would you please turn off any cell phones or noise makers or silence them that you may have in your pockets? Roll call.
Nino.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
Claude.
Here.
Solomon.
Here.
Duffy.
Here.
And Zatcek.
Here. Approval of the minutes has published.
So moved.
I'll second.
Comments, discussion, punctuation, criticisms?
Not today.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Comments and correspondence? Let's see, correspondence first?
July 31st special meeting, also.
Sorry? I also need the minutes of the July 31st special meeting for approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve this special meeting.
I'll second it.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Comments and correspondence? Any correspondence?
No, sir.
Comments? Does anybody in the public wish to make a comment on a non-agenda item? New Village Board business items. We're going to take one item out of order. We're going to move to item number seven. Consider a motion to confirm the appointment and nomination of a qualified citizen to fill Pam Apshur's vacancy on the Village Board of Trustees for the remainder of the unexpired term and to serve on various committees. I'm nominating Kathy Enquist. I would ask Kathy to come forward and just give us a brief statement of her background and say hello.
Here.
That's fine.
Hi, my name is Kathy Enquist. I don't know, some of you know me, I run a business in Sister Bay. I have Dogma Grooming Studio. It's been phenomenal since I opened about four years ago and dedicated myself full-time to it. Recently, we just purchased another shop and hope to expand, and it's just been so exciting to be in Sister Bay and see all the expansion going on and all the people moving up into the condos, near the Piggly Wiggly, and I personally am enjoying all the benefits of the town park, and I just would like to be part of all that that's happening. I think it's wonderful. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I would make that motion to nominate Kathy.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Repose? Carrie, congratulations.
Thank you.
So the procedure would be she would be sworn in and then be available to vote for the next meeting. Back up to item number one. Consider a motion to approve ordinance 230-081914, amended numerous portions of the official map of the village of Sister Bay, which relates to the areas east of Canterbury Lane, south of Maple Drive, south of Cherrywood Lane, and west of State Highway 57. Mr. Administrator.
This is an item that came out of planning permission. I'm going to get to it up here on the overhead. This was done mostly as a cleanup of our official map. The portions that were substantially amended were, as located here, the old official map showed a continuation of Meadow Wood along to an officially mapped street running north and south. That is now a new category extension per development plans and SCAM. And what's come up there, once upon a time, was an officially mapped street running through de-condominiums located here off of Cherrywood Lane that has been deleted out. And the internal roadways here ran slightly differently and have now been amended as per the adopted subdivision plat from Mr. Garrett's Stone Ridge Development. Other than that, this remained substantial assignment. So if there's some erosion.
Questions or discussion? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion that we accept the new officially mapped street, ma'am.
Second. Any other discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Repose? Carrie?
I'm planning.
Item number two. Consider a motion to approve a recommendation of the Bay Shore Drive Committee to add individual property service upgrades to Bay Shore Drive project costs.
All right, so ladies and gentlemen, one of the major challenges moving forward with the burial of overhead utility lines is there are a number of service recipients that currently do not have an underground electric service to their building. As a consequence for WPS to move ahead with burial, upgrades will need to be made. Some of them are relatively minor, some of them are rather substantial. The most substantial case, there are currently three different services running into a structure, two single-phase power, one three-phase power. That'll all most likely be converted over to three-phases with consultation of the owner of that structure. And that's the ball they've got that running there. So in your package, you will see a fee estimate from Action Electric, which details the individual services and approximated cost of what it will take to make those upgrades. Right now, Mike Maltby is working with these customers to go through site sketch waivers and requests for service, which need to be made through WPS in order to facilitate this project. I hope to have those done by the end of the month yet, or first part of September to move this thing along. There is a bit of a deadline with this, and so the Bay Shore Drive Committee felt it incumbent on us to absorb these costs as a part of the project. If a single property owner along this project injects whole projects over, some total cost was $42,500.
Estimated, right?
Estimated.
That could go up substantially?
It could.
Well, when Mike Maltby was here, though, he's looked this over and he was fairly comfortable. He said some of the lesser expensive ones are probably padded. He said generally those are easy, and he just picked a round number that he said if some of those should come in lower, even if some of the more complex ones come in a little higher, he felt pretty good that this should be a reasonable estimate.
Just so we don't have any issue later on, you all may consider allowing us some additional room here, even though Mike did feel pretty comfortable. It would be a shame to have a project held up because of $1,000 somewhere along the line when something came up.
Did we have any discussions about sharing the costs with the business owners?
Before my time, I believe he did have some discussion about that. However, given the speed at which this needs to be accomplished and the relative burden on some of the businesses, the committee and their wisdom felt incumbent on it more than.
Since early on in the project, the Bay Shore Oversight Committee had recommended that the village absorb connection costs up to the building because that was for the convenience of the village burying the lines at this point in time. And anything from there in would be a responsibility of the business owner, and some of them will have to absorb some cost for that.
Is that still the case? So, once the services to their building, they have to pay for the rest?
Yeah, this gets it there.
This gets it there.
But what would be different for the rest? If this, the new service is underground, it comes to their building, what's different internally in their building that they'd have to change?
Some of these services were put in in the '50s, '60s, who knows when, and they all have to be brought up to a current code level for WPS to do the service. One issue that we are examining to try to save some cost, for example, if you look back behind Husby's Drink Coffee, that area, we potentially could locate homes back behind those buildings and serve those buildings from the rear instead of off of the front, the Bay Shore Drive side, which is where they're currently served from. And by doing so, save us several thousand dollars, we will still achieve the look that we're going for, but not necessarily the full function of having it completely underground. It would just be outside out of mine. Any one of those options that we have will examine.
I like the idea of us absorbing costs, especially for the businesses that are directly affected by this project, but I don't like that word of absorbing costs. Where is that money coming from?
Technically, it's coming from a borrow that you all will make to a bank or the sale of properties of which you have two on the table currently. It's a credit, right? So they're responsible for paying and responsible for reimbursing.
Okay. Do we have any idea what it's going to cost yet, or have they given us any estimates as far as on what the burial is going to cost?
John, the best estimate that I've seen is just shot $950,000, and we won't know the totality of it until they're done. They won't even offer us a contract price until they're done.
Was $950,000 what we were anticipating? It seems to me, I remember, $800,000.
We're anticipating closer to a million now, in the first place?
Yeah, we padded that.
We do anticipate maybe slightly less than that because of, in the worst-case scenario, saw cutting and everything. It's kind of a long-term saw cut.
When are they planning on, John?
Let's start, most probably in the spring, John, if we can keep everything on track. We have a meeting on September 18th, coordination meeting between the all utilities, WPS and DOT to monitor progress. We'll be doing that down in Green Bay, so the DOT has an opportunity to speak with WPS and the other providers to ensure this is going to meet DOT's top line.
So from my understanding, the money was budgeted or has been discussed for this. Had we ever gotten in the past, had we ever gotten quotes from an electrician to do that, and has that money ever been set aside? Or is this, we've known about it, known about it, known about it, now we need to figure out where we're going to get the money from?
You all have already done an authorization for $950,000 for a borrow to Bay Lake.
Okay.
As for this one particular part, Action Electric, because they have a history of working with the village, did so on your Mill Road update when we went through that. Staff felt it prudent to go with unknown entity and bring them forward, especially given the timing and nature of it.
I'm not questioning the company, I'm just questioning whether we've known about it for years.
In Bay Shore Drive, in early discussions, it was estimated that it'd be $35,000 to $40,000 probably. And once we got to the point where we knew it was actually going to happen, we were going to ask for a little bit better estimate, and that's what this represents. It was all anticipated being that dollar.
So that's part of that padding that was put there?
There was also the $2,000 Bay Shore Drive approved to go ahead and get Mike working on this. So I had that, that cost, but again, that's part of your overall project cost. As you guys consider to toe some.
Any other questions? Carrie make a motion?
I'm making the motion to accept the recommendation of the Bay Shore Drive Committee.
Second. Anything about the project cost?
Not to exceed of the burial of the overhead utility lines to the buildings, not to exceed the total cost of $42,500.
Yep.
Yeah, that's why I hesitated. You said you wanted leeway on it.
I would like some, it would just mean that I'm going to have to come back to you guys if.
We authorized Administrator to hit Mr. Sir taking up the 45.
Yes.
But I would anticipate that that occurs, he's going to notify the committee members. Got that?
Can I read it back?
Yes, please.
Motion was made by Solomon, seconded by Claude, that the Village Board accepts the recommendation of the Bay Shore Drive Reconstruction Oversight Committee and adds the individual service upgrade cost depicted on the document, which was included in the meeting packets, to the estimated costs of the Bay Shore Drive reconstruction project. If the cost of the upgrades exceeds the amount depicted on the previously mentioned document, the costs may go as high as $45,000.
Sounds like what I said.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Repose? Item number four. Consider a motion to act on the recommendation of the Finance and Water/Wastewater Storm Mark Committees to approve Resolution 293-081914, authorizing a pilot on Sister Bay water utility. Mr. Administrator.
Okay, so as mentioned by the President, this has come through two different committees. What this is, I'll ask Steve Jacobson to make some comments on this as well from the staff, so I feel like amongst our staff, it's important that all viewpoints are expressed. In examining which entities paid a pilot, which entities did not pay a pilot, the Marina, of course, pays $161, roughly $1,000 pilot into the village general fund. None of our other enterprise funds do. You all know the financial state of the Marina. So, in an effort to balance some of that, PSC regulates the amount of a pilot that can be established on a water utility only. There are other utilities that you have. In this case, PSC per rate determination, this is what I'm going to consider a soft number. You'll then just install some infrastructure in the ground, which will impact how the rate is calculated, will be a $41,249 pilot placed on a water utility. This is done because the water utility does not pay tax to any entity as a municipal subunit of government for service delivery. The approximate impact on this to our customers, we have roughly 1,100 utility customers, is $9.66 per quarter, per customer. And with that, I'd like Steve to make some remarks regarding his tenure with the utility and how he feels about it.
The overriding concern that I have, and I guess I realize the tax implications that the village has right now with revenue, but the overriding concern that I have for utility is its impact on it, both short-term, long-term, in trade pays. As we go through this thing, more water you use, like I said, it might be $9, and some have said, for customers, the more water you use, the more it's going to impact you. And I guess when we were discussing this at committee level, I also, I guess maybe I wasn't paying attention or I wasn't completely aware of that this money is supposed to go directly to the offset costs for Marina.
Right, I'll need to pull it back for a second and ask Julie Ann another question. As we pull together our budget numbers for the year, there are a number of moving factors, and I made the Marina Committee aware of this at our last meeting.
Yep.
That is that there are fire protection fees, which do not adjust on a dollar basis, they adjust on a percent basis, and Julie Ann will make some comments on that as well. But, go ahead, sir.
So, with that, I think about the whole thing, it just doesn't seem like the right way in the business. If we're using this money for utilities, that's going to basically affect the people that use the most water, or people that, you want to say, like your own. I'm just uncomfortable with the concept.
The whole concept of a pilot.
Yeah. I don't see why you'd tax yourself. While it might be a law, it just seems like you're, if one gets to the other, it's still coming out of the tax.
Julie Ann, if you wouldn't, Steve, is that?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, sir. If you wouldn't mind enlightening the board on what we discovered about the fire fees and how that will adjust.
What's coming here?
Yeah, I'm going to back up a little bit, picking up on something Steve said. When the utility committee voted to recommend doing this, I think it was assumed at that meeting that the money would go to the general fund. The finance committee's recommendation is the one that includes the offset to the Marina pilot. So there were two different assumptions made in those two recommendations. We're engaging in a rate case with the Public Service Commission right now. We hope to have that completed by January. The Bay Shore Drive improvements that we've just made will factor into any rate increase that is made, as well as will this pilot. But whenever the PSC looks at a rate increase, they also increase fire protection costs. The village pays approximately half of our total fire protection cost right now, $42,000. The village will hopefully continue to do that, but when the PSC does this rate case, they will add the fire protection increase equally, it's my understanding, to the customers and the village. So they'll add to that $42,000. This means that the village is going to be paying more out of its general fund for fire protection, we call it hybrid rental, and the village, we will have to subtract the additional amount that customers will pay in fees from our allowable levy because of the Act 20 ruling that any time you impose fees or increase fees in certain areas, which include garbage collection and fire protection, there are some other areas as well, you have to subtract that increase in fees from your allowable levy. Now, it's my understanding that the PSC is protesting this ruling. That's the way the Department of Revenue is interpreting Act 20 right now. But in the meantime, that's what we're going to be stuck with. So there will be, there will be an impact on the general fund that the finance committee was not aware of, because this is new information, when it suggested that there should be a one-to-one correspondence between the increase from the water utility and a decrease in the Marina pilot.
I guess I want to say something about what went down at the finance committee. It would go into the general fund, okay? The intent of the finance committee on a separate discussion was to reduce the Marina pilot, okay? Whether that came out of reserve fund, it came out of something else, okay? And I made the comment that I'd like to see a decrease in the Marina pilot based on the pilot, the one that went based on what we get potentially from the water.
Right, that's in the minutes that are in your paper.
On that, what Julie Ann was discussing, a very preliminary number that we came up with to determine what the impact on those fire fees would be, was $8,000, I recall, impacted the general fund.
It's a guess.
So, just want to make sure I understood what you said about the PSC. If they do, if they authorize a rate increase, whatever that rate increase is decreases our levy?
Only the portion of the rate increase that is due to fire protection, due to an increase in fire protection costs, the PSC will determine that.
We have to absorb.
Right, I know, but at the moment, the way that we understand it.
Yes.
Every dollar that you would have a rate increase on the utility turns around and is a dollar less allowable than the tax limit.
If you put all of the fire protection rate increase on the customers, then you have to subtract all of it from the allowable levy. If you split it and put half of it on the village and half of it on the customers, then you subtract the customer's half from the allowable levy, but then the village is paying more. The net effect is exactly the same on the general.
Whether they're paying for it on their tax bill or whether they're paying for it on their utility bill.
The net effect is different on the customers, but it's, but it does the same thing to the general fund, whichever way you do it.
Seems to me we need to find out what the increase is going to be, and then you determine how to take care of it.
When we were going.
You're looking at 120 days for PSC to make a determination on the rate. There are some variables that go into this for the rate case. For example, the infrastructure we just installed in the ground. One more unknown that's outstanding right now is the SCAM project and the infrastructure they will end up dedicating back to the village. All of that gets added into the total value of the utility, and then they determine the rate, and part of that being the pilot off of that. So we're looking, let's just say your ability to bill for this would be second quarter of 2015 at the earliest if you acted tonight.
Okay, I guess I'm more concerned about what the potential effect is on the levy and how that would affect.
They have up to 120 days, and this will be submitted either at the end of this week or next week to the PSC for them to start working on. So we're talking about September, October, what time?
Possibly.
It may be, it may be faster.
Steve?
I had one question for Julie Ann. When we were looking at the potential increase of what we put in the ground, did you also take a look at what was abandoned, that would be subtracted?
Yeah.
They were asking for that also. I don't know whether you gave that to Martha, but they want that.
So, was your estimate of $8,000, did it include the fact that we abandoned it?
That's a separate, the asset value come back as a general rate increase, so it's a separate discussion from just the pilot. The snapshot we have on the pilot is based on everything from last year. So if everything remained exactly the same, this is what our pilot would come in, of course, we've had the changes, so that'll shift.
Amber did ask whether we abandoned any hybrids, and you need to provide that.
When we get the information back from PSC, does it matter whether we did it in 2014? Applies next year? Or if we got it in January, it took that long, would it apply next year?
If we got what?
The rate information back from PSC, when would that apply to the levy?
Are we talking about the fire fees?
Yes.
That's a good question. It might apply the following year.
So would it be 15, 16?
If we don't get it.
Do you have to adopt a budget, or have to tell them that?
Yeah, right. It would probably apply from the end of 15, for the 2016 budget.
We don't know for sure.
But that's a probably. So that would negatively impact the, or positively, however you want to look at it, so it would decrease the pilot payment by up to $8,000, is what you're saying? Or that would just be the total amount of leviable tax, correct?
You would.
It wouldn't reduce the pilot, it would.
Reduce the levy.
It would reduce the amount you can levy.
By way of adjustment.
Let's rephrase that, reduce the levy amount by $4,000, contributing $4,000 to make it even. So you all would just bite off the $4,000 recommendation to keep them static as they are now, in other words, the customer doesn't see a change in their bill on that item.
So this is where we're, okay, I'm trying to see the connection between these two. So this is what we're seeing, is that there's a possible rate increase because of the fire protection, plus this possible pilot that would also increase their levy.
Yeah, if you're looking at.
We're talking, we're talking about this because of the idea in this board report that the total increase from the utility would offset the Marina pilot.
Okay.
That's what it says here. And this is new information that might affect that thinking.
Essentially, what, part of this discussion, what we're looking for tonight is an authorization on the pilot with the understanding that what happened.
I'm going to back up a little bit, picking up on something Steve said. When the utility committee voted to recommend doing this, I think it was assumed at that meeting that the money would go to the general fund. The finance committee's recommendation is the one that
Also.
includes the offset to the Marina pilot. So there were two different assumptions made in those two recommendations. We're engaging in a rate case with the Public Service Commission right now. We hope to have that completed by January. The Bay Shore Drive improvements that we've just made will factor into any rate increase that is made, as well as will this pilot. But whenever the PSC looks at a rate increase, they also increase fire protection costs. The Village pays approximately half of our total fire protection cost right now, forty-two thousand dollars. The Village will hopefully continue to do that. But when the PSC does this rate case, they will add the fire protection increase equally, it's my understanding, to the customers and the Village. So they'll add to that forty-two thousand. This means that the Village is going to be paying more out of its general fund for fire protection, we call it hybrid rental. And the Village, we will have to subtract the additional amount that customers will pay in fees from our allowable levy because of the Act 20 ruling that anytime you impose fees or increase fees in certain areas, which include garbage collection and fire protection, there are some other areas as well. You have to subtract that increase in fees from your allowable levy. Now, it's my understanding that the PSC is protesting this ruling. That's the way the Department of Revenue is interpreting Act 20 right now. But in the meantime, that's what we're going to be stuck with. So there will be an impact on the general fund that the finance committee was not aware of, because this is new information, when it suggested that there should be a one-to-one correspondence between the increase from the water utility and a decrease in the Marina pilot.
Well, I guess I want to say something about what went down at the finance committee. It would go into the general fund. The intent of the finance committee, on a separate discussion, was to reduce the Marina pilot. Whether that came out of the reserve fund, it came out of something else. And I made the comment that I'd like to see a decrease in the Marina pilot based on the pilot, the one that went based on what we get potentially from the water.
Right. That's in the minutes that are in your patent.
On that, what Julie Holmes discussed, a very preliminary number that we came up with to determine what the impact on those fire fees would be was eight thousand dollars, if I recall, impacted the general fund.
It's a guess.
So just want to make sure I understood what you said about the PSC. If they do, if they authorize a rate increase, whatever that rate increase is decreases our levy?
Only the portion of the rate increase that is due to fire protection, due to an increase in fire protection costs. The PSC will determine that.
We have to absorb.
Right, I know, but at the moment, the way that we understand it, every dollar that you would have a rate increase on the utility turns around and is a dollar less allowable than the tax rate.
If you put all of the fire protection rate increase on the customers, then you have to subtract all of it from the allowable levy. If you split it and put half of it on the Village and half of it on the customers, then you subtract the customer's half from the allowable levy. But then the Village is paying more. The net effect is exactly the same on the general.
Whether they're paying for it on their tax bill or whether they're paying for it on their utility bill.
The net effect is different on the customers, but it does the same thing to the general fund whichever way you do it.
Seems to me we need to find out what the increase is going to be and then you determine how to take care of it.
When we would know.
Well, you're looking at 120 days for the PSC to make a determination on the rate. There are some variables that go into this for the rate case. For example, the infrastructure we just installed in the ground. One more unknown that's outstanding right now is the SCAM project and the infrastructure they will end up dedicating back to the Village. All of that gets added into the total value of the utility and then they determine the rate. And part of that being the pilot off of that. So we're looking, let's just say your ability to bill for this would be second quarter of 2015 at the earliest if you acted tonight.
Okay, I guess I'm more concerned about what the potential effect is on the levy and how that would affect.
They have up to 120 days and this will be submitted either at the end of this week or next week to the PSC for them to start working on. So we're talking about September, October.
Possibly.
Possibly. It may be faster.
Steve?
I had one question for you, Julianne. When we were looking at the potential increase of what we put in the ground, did you also take a look at what was abandoned? That would be subtracted.
They were asking for that also. I don't know whether you gave that to Mark, but they want that.
So was your estimate of eight thousand, did it include the fact that we abandoned it?
That's a separate, the asset value come back as a general rate increase, so it's a separate discussion from just the pilot. The snapshot we have on the pilot is based on everything from last year. So if everything remained exactly the same, this is what our pilot would come in. Of course, we've had the changes, so that will shift.
Amber did ask whether we abandoned any hybrids and you need to provide that.
When we get the information back from the PSC, does it matter whether we did it in 2014? It applies next year or if we got it in January, it took that long, would it apply next year?
If we got what?
The rate information back from the PSC, when would that apply to the levy?
Are we talking about the fire fees?
Yes.
That's a good question. It might apply the following year. If we don't get it.
Do you have to adopt a budget or have it on the high grade?
Yeah, right. It would probably apply at the end of 15, for the 2016 budget.
We don't know for sure.
But that's a probably. So that would negatively impact the, or positively however you want to look at it, so it would decrease the pilot payment by up to eight thousand dollars, is what you're saying? Or that would just be the total amount of leaviable tax, correct?
You would.
It wouldn't reduce the pilot, it would.
Reduce the levy.
Reduce the levy. You can levy.
By way of adjustment.
Let's rephrase that. Reduce the levy amount by four thousand, contributing four thousand to make it even. So you all would just bite off the full eight thousand. Okay, our recommendation. To keep things static as they are now. In other words, the customer doesn't see a change in their bill on that item.
So this is where we're, okay, I'm trying to see the connection between these two. So this is what we're seeing is that there's a possible rate increase because of the fire protection, plus this possible pilot that would also increase their levy.
Yeah, if you're looking at.
We're talking about this because of the idea in this board report that the total increase from the utility would offset the Marina pilot. That's what it says here. And this is new information that might affect that thinking.
Essentially, what, part of this discussion, what we're looking for tonight is an authorization on the pilot with the understanding that what happens to that pilot will be flushed out of the budget in the process, not necessarily as a motion. Here, I'd already written this and compiled it. Finances already had their meeting without us having the knowledge about fire fees and what would take place there. So we kept it all static, so we've had the conversation here.
Have we got, do we know where we are with the net new construction?
Yes. You have approximately twenty-two thousand dollars in net new construction. So I think four point seven, four point four seven five million. You have a total loss of around 10 million in existing asset value.
You mean property value? I guess my only concern with it, and I like the fact that this money has been said, this is what we're using it for, when you said that going to Marina. I bid onto that because it doesn't end up becoming a cash cow for the Village just to say, hey, we have forty thousand dollars every year to, let's do something fun with it. And I know that wouldn't happen, but we're all sitting here understanding that wouldn't happen. But in 10 years, it's a whole nother group of people that are going to take that pilot in a different direction. And it can happen anyways. But that's why I like, we know what this forty thousand dollars is going to. I just, I don't know, I don't want it to end up becoming just because we need, we're taking from ourselves to give to ourselves. I mean, it just.
You, from your Marina's cash projections are not doing incredibly well. Essentially, what's happening is your Marina is depreciating 225,000 dollars a year and you're putting around 20,000 dollars a year cash away. So the net effect is a negative 205,000 dollar loss in rent every year. At some point, you will have to replace those assets and it will become the albatross around your neck if you don't take some active steps to mitigate the cash situation. We can, can and are taking proactive steps on the revenue end to drive it there. But on the expense side, there's only so much we can do. We're fairly down to bare minimums before you begin to really compromise service quality.
Well, if you look at the Marina and you look at the operating funds and the profit that the Marina generates, virtually 100% of the profit generated by the Marina goes to pilot and administrative and parks costs. We pay 200,000 dollars to the Village out of a 600,000 dollar budget. Okay, and it was predicated on, well, let's raise the prices to the slips every year 3% and to the transients every year 3% and we'll keep trying to maintain that program. You reach a point of no return. You can't just keep pricing somebody up. We're already at the pinnacle. So we don't have the flexibility of pricing the customer up. Okay, so what we end up doing is we're running into loss and we're going into our reserves every year. And we're a separate enterprise fund as a business and that's not sustainable. We can't, we can't just keep going negative. And that goes to the general fund. And what they're talking about here is this would go to the general fund, but as to, you know, I don't care if it comes from utilities or somewhere, the general fund has to provide some relief back to the Marina. You can't take a third of your operating profit. And, you know, we can't sustain ourselves.
Anybody else? Denise has got her hand up. Anybody else on the board? I will open this up momentarily to the public. So Denise?
So the reason that the board is having this discussion tonight is because the Marina is having financial troubles.
No. No. The original discussion started with what's happening with the levy caps, what's happening with the levy compression, what's happening with the mill rate because of decrease in property values and increased costs within the village. And of course, we're trying to do whatever we can to alleviate the costs whenever possible. That's what started the whole discussion.
Okay, but what's here, the recommendation on?
Finance made the recommendation that, yes, any dollars that come in for this amount be used for, reduce the Marina pilot.
In the past, the Village Board has always said that even if you were not a boater, did not have a boat, did not use the Marina at all, that because of the pilot, everybody that pays taxes in this Village got something back. As a resident, as a business owner, if you raise my taxes for different projects that are going on in the Village, I may or may not like it, but I certainly can understand it. I do not understand if you want to raise my rates on sewer and water to offset the Marina. I have a huge problem with that. If you want to finance the Marina possibly in some other way, but to do it by the ratepayers of this Village, I think is wrong. We, as a downtown business owner, and we all know what this last winter was like with the bad weather and the road construction. And a lot of us did not do as well as what we would have liked or even, you know, hit previous year. A lot of us were down. So if the Marina is having problems, welcome to my world. I think that there's some other way that you can address this because I think it's just wrong.
I may have made a poor choice in tying it to that, the way that I did verbally. Whether it comes from a pilot for the utility or whether that goes into a general fund or whether it comes out of some other fund, it's still going to end up somewhere on the taxpayer. And that's the issue. So we're trying to figure out where and how. And the whole discussion of pilots and enterprise funds came about when we, why are we, quote, taxing one enterprise fund but not taxing the other enterprise fund?
And it also, sorry, we look at, if we go back, say, five years and look at the pilot that was on the Marina. The Marina could afford that and could sustain itself. Over the last five years, that has gone up, has quadrupled. And if you look at how versus how we all pay our property taxes, half comes, half goes to the local entity and half goes to the county and the college and all kinds of other stuff. The pilot, in my mind, should be what the Village is losing, which is a little less than half of the tax rate. So the pilot on the Marina is more than double what it should be. If you, if you make it like equal that we're all paying on our taxes what the Village loses in that pilot, everything's fine. Okay, I feel bad that this is coming up this way. These are two separate issues. And I was the one leading the charge on the pilot for the Marina because being on the Marina committee, I can't be someone that oversees the management and can see it going to get run into the ground because we're overtaxing it. So I brought it up. Dave was nice enough to say, yeah, we should relieve the Marina. It's really two separate things. This is not alleviating the Marina. When the utility was created, there was a waiver granted for the utility not to pay a pilot. It's typical to pay a pilot. We said, we're going to grant a waiver until such time as the pilot can, the utility can afford to pay the pilot. We just never got around to implementing a pilot. We're implementing the pilot on the Marina, we should. We should do it properly like any other tax person. We're in a situation where the Village, you know, to bury overhead lines and to do this wonderful downtown redevelopment, we're strapped, you know, we need to find revenue sources. And so this is a way to impose what should have been done in the first place, regardless of the Marina.
Can I respond to something that you said, Patrick?
Sure.
I can understand if you would use the 41,000 dollars and it goes into the general fund and it would help offset some costs for all the projects that the Village is doing. But that's not what you're talking about. You're talking about reducing the Marina pilot so the Village still ends up with only 160,000.
Denise, I suppose that's what staff's actually asking the board tonight, is to say, look, let's enact the pilot on the utility. We understand the debt situation that we're in. I give the analogy regularly, this won't be spot on, but they're rough numbers. If you had a thousand dollar credit card and our allowable debt limit were to be analogous to a thousand dollar credit card, the Village, by the time we're done with all of these projects, barring no asset sales, would be somewhere around 920 or 950 dollars on that credit card. So essentially, our line of credit is almost maxed out. We do have approximately 22,000 dollars coming in this year from net new construction. And the board will have to make a determination at budget time on how much of that they're going to take in order to increase the levy. The broader discussion about fire, fire protection fees is going to have to be brought into consideration along with other cost increases that will occur this year. We're adding on structures and facilities and at the same time, not adding on hours to maintain or provide services to those facilities. So as we move through the budget process, we'll be considering those as well. Again, if the board acts to authorize this tonight, the earliest to be able to bill for it looks like second quarter of 2015. To do it tonight allows us to get into the budget process and plan accordingly. I'd recommend they not take any additional time to study this given the time of the year.
Ken?
I just have to confer with Denise and Steve. This was brought up a few years ago when I was on the board. It's a bad idea then, I think it's a bad idea now. I would rather be taxed rather than just taking it from the sewer and water. You're only giving people that are on sewer and water. Plain and simple. It's just not right.
One quick number just to drop out. 511 utilities in the state of Wisconsin enacted a pilot payment for a sum of 92.9 million dollars in collection in 2011. Just a thought process back.
Speaking as kind of every man on the street's fixed income, everyday person, our sewer and water rate's been going up real steadily and this is, this would be a difficult pill to swallow and yet I would rather pay more taxes because, I don't know, somehow that is more palatable. The Village needs more money and I approve of all the improvements we've made, you know, for every one of them. And sometimes you do. I think we have very manageable taxes. You know, you're not objecting to that. I do object to sewer and water rates. But I heard the sum of 1,200 a month that the Marina is paying for a pilot. Is that correct?
161,000.
161 a month.
Not a year.
A year, a year, right. And then John mentioned something about the Marina pays the Village 20,000 or something.
They pay 20,000 to the parks for their labor for the Marina. They pay 20,000 for administrative costs to the Village, so that's 200,000.
Labor's awash, whether you hire your own labor for the Marina or you hire your own staffs people. But the Marina has always prided itself and the Village is very aware of it, it's the villagers. It's been self-sustaining, is not in, you know, the tax rule in that it has paid for itself, but.
And that's what we're trying to do.
I, yeah, to wrap Peter to paint Paul in this instance from the sewer and water rates to the Marina, I just don't like to see it for the average citizen.
Just one other general statement on this. This is coming from a rural background. I've dealt a good bit with USDA RD and obtaining loans for drilling wells, various other things related to utilities. Your rates are the lower third in the state of Wisconsin. If you were to follow federal minimum guidelines, they take an income approach to it, which is to take the median household income for your jurisdiction, multiply that by 1.5%. So 1.5% for water and an additional 1.5% for sewer. You're currently at about half that of what you, quote unquote, should be paying if you were to obtain federal funds. So you have rates that are well below market level largely because you have an incredibly well-run utility. Shameless plug for Steve there. That's what it is. You know, I look, the rate goes like, wow, this is cheap.
Well, why can't you just say, forget the 9.66 per quarter for each sewer and water person and just put it on the tax roll at eight dollars? You have more people.
You have to have a referendum.
Right.
Whatever. Do the referendum. I'd rather pay the tax than everybody pays for the projects that the Village is doing. If you want to help offset the Marina, fine, but don't just tack it on sewer and water.
I guess the only, the only thing I have to say about it is we look at putting it on a tax roll. The likelihood of us taking that money off the tax roll is near impossible, the way the levy's set and the way that Walker has made things go as far as taxation and how much money that the Village can take. The, or, yeah, how much money the Village can take. The, is much, in my mind, I see lowering rates for our sewer and water a lot easier than lowering our tax rate because, and you guys know, you guys run finance. If you don't take it, you're never getting it again.
Can I respond to that?
Please, yeah, absolutely.
Didn't last year you choose not to take everything that you could? And so we've lost that now?
Absolutely.
At finance?
Absolutely. Because we're trying to reduce the burden. Because once we take, we can't, in my, this is my opinion, this is where I was coming from with this. Once we take that money, that money's there. You're, we're not able, well, we are able to, but it's much, much harder to relieve that tax burden with the levy and the way the system is. Correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, if I'm completely way off base, I apologize. But with our ratepayers, and this is just the way that I see it, with our ratepayers, we can actually reduce those charges and we can relieve those fees if they're too abundant. Let's say it's going, there's a possibility that the Village could say, okay, let's lower those rates, let's, we can work those out. Well, it'll never happen either way.
Right.
But with my mind, that's the way, okay. It would be easier with something that we control at a local level to do that with. But something at a state level, it's going to be much harder to. So it's going to come from the taxpayers one way, shape or form. And I believe you're right that the ratepayers, it's a smaller group. So I understand, but, I don't know, that's where I was coming from with it. That's just what I want to say, my position on it. So whether, I guess you agree or not, but.
Let's flip the coin one way. Just from the Marina perspective, not taking this pilot and putting it on the Marina. Okay, you say it's hard to get off. The Marina pilot went on at less than 50,000 dollars. Okay, in five years, it's now 161,000. Okay, so what they've done is it's become a cash cow. So we purchased Johnson property. We said, let's take the Marina and since they're a large beneficiary of that, which I voted for and agreed to, to pay that debt so it does not go on the taxpayer's roll. That became on the Marina, that's part of it. That's in addition to the pilot program. At the same time, we have so many other expenditures, the only cash cow the Village has is the Marina. And so therefore, it's, let's raise the pilot on the Marina, let's put, you know, the labor cost, everything else at a higher burden grade on the Marina because they have the cash. Okay, so now we're faced against same thing changes. How do I get it off of there? How do I get, you know, the noose around my neck off? You know, so we can operate within our thing. We don't charge taxes to the Village. That Marina is self-sustained, 100%. And we absorb the Johnson purchased property, you know, for the taxpayer on the Village. We bring in several hundred thousand dollars of revenue to the Village businesses from transient boaters and everybody coming into the Marina. So, you know, to just say, well, this is where the general fund is and we need more money, so let's, and essentially tax the Marina more, how do you get it off of our backs? And that's what they're talking here, is we're looking for relief because I'm saying, wait a second, you know, you got me up here, okay? And we're going into all our reserves and we're going negative and we can't raise rates anymore. And so I'm trying to get relief now, whether it becomes from a pilot program, you know, on something else, or we say, let's cut expenditures somewhere else and not do some. on something else, or we say, let's cut expenditures somewhere else and not do some of these projects and not take as much from, you know, the marina type thing, or we raise taxes on everybody to get it to the general fund. But that's where the program is. It's not, it's not saying, geez, I have to take this pilot and generate it so I can give the marina because they want it.
I want to make a correction to the statement John made. The marina does not pay one hundred percent of the Johnson borrow.
I said portion of.
It pays a portion of.
Yes.
The vast majority of it is on the taxpayer.
Just to respond to that too, and that, it should, in essence, I know it's going to take a number of years, but that should be going down. I mean, the payoff of the property block is, is a de-escalating thing, not escalating thing.
It's still escalating for the next several years.
For the next six years, you'll have an escalation in debt service associated with the borrowers that you paid, and then you'll see it drop off a good bit, two hundred thousand dollars in service load.
It is out there, it's dropping.
Julia?
I just wanted to clarify a couple of things, if you don't mind. As far as the utility rates are concerned, even if we don't impose this pilot on the, on the water utility, water rates will go up somewhat because of the improvements that have been made. We're doing the right case now, even if we took the pilot out of that.
I thought it was like on an every other year, one year sewer, next year water.
That's correct. And we're doing water this year, okay? And then, to your point about levy limits, we've heard three people say that they would rather pay more taxes. If the citizens in general feel that way, there's a possibility of a referendum to, to exceed the levy limit. I just wanted to...
I don't argue the philosophical point of that. I would tell you that given that we're in August, given that we have to have a budget adopted preferably in November, and that we have a number of projects which are time-sensitive, given that we're getting ready to book, what should be a sixty to seventy-five year improvement in, on facial drive, we're out of time. To carry something to public plebsite for referendum in order to amend the taxes is a lengthy process to go through. I'm not saying that it's not an admirable process to go through. That's not the direction that we started down some months ago when we began this conversation. This is what's before us this evening. And if we want to move forward with the projects that we have, we want to do it without swallowing larger sums of debt burden, we want to handle the increased operational costs that we're going to have, this is the mechanism to accomplish that. If at a later date the village wishes to repeal that, and you can read in the PSC papers that that's been done, then that's something that we could bring up at a later time. Your marina revenue was off by approximately this sum this year. Just as a footnote.
Clarification point on the levy. What happens with debt service on the levy? Each year, we do what with the debt service on the levy?
Add.
So whatever the debt service is, we add it.
Yes. If debt service increases, then we can add that to the levy. The only other thing we can add, other than the new, net new construction, is the, our increase in fire costs for the fire department. And we don't have a budget from the fire department yet.
We do. They're, the operating budget, they're asking for a one point seven percent increase, which is less than, I think about, it's about nineteen hundred dollars total for the year to the village.
Okay, well, then that's the most we can increase there.
Either way.
I would make a motion that we accept the recommendation of finance and the Al-Wa Committee to establish a pilot on the village of Sister Bay's water utility.
Second motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Carrie?
It's opposed.
Thank you for your comments, thank you for your objections. Consider a motion to change the name of the water, wastewater and stormwater committees to the water, sewer and stormwater committee in the village bylaws. Motion by Lino.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Consider a motion to accept the recommendation of finance committee to reallocate administrative personnel costs by adopting resolution number two ninety-four oh eight one nine one four. Want to explain that?
Yes, this is a result of our auditor's recommendation that we increase the allocation of time to the, to the TIF. And effectively, what we did was to sit down and take a closer look at the estimate of time that we allocate to both the TIF and the utility again, in working with the auditor on this. Juliana, give any additional statement from there?
Given, given the number of projects that are going on right now, the amount of my time, Zeke's time, and...
Yes, so...
So what does that do to the TIF? I mean, what dollars are we talking about, and what does it do to the TIF?
It increases the expenses to the TIF. So for example, under the old system, Janelle had no time allocated to the TIF. Under the new recommendation, there'd be a five percent allocation of total available hours to the TIF. Christie Sully's time under the old allocation was a half a percent, under the new one it's five percent. I spent almost all my time in the TIF, or a huge amount of my time in the TIF, and the old allocation was ten percent, and the new one it would be forty-five. And then for Juliana, ten percent allocation under the old model, twenty-five percent under the new one.
And just as a point of clarification, did, did you say you, you spent forty-five percent of your total time on TIF-related activities?
Anything that occurs inside of that TIF district. For example, Keith Garrett's development is inside the TIF district. Any time that I spend from a planning and zoning standpoint is inside that.
The redevelopment?
Yeah, all the redevelopment stuff, the utilities project, the beach, the pavilion, all of that stuff is inside the TIF district, therefore is expensable to the TIF. So it would make sense to expense it to the TIF.
So when we expense it to the TIF, so park, marina, village activities that are in that TIF, are we relieving those entities and the TIF's absorbing it, or...
The TIF takes the cost on, and what you can think of is a, I want to call it a balance, it's this book over here to the side, and we continue to essentially take from it, even though the general fund is paying for it, it's a credit card that we're running against, so to speak. And as we increase asset value over here, we're able to pay ourselves back the amount that we borrowed out of the TIF, like I've got a, or expense it to the TIF.
So it's a way, it's a matter of keeping records for the future possibility of reimbursement from the, from the taxing.
So when revenue occurs within the TIF district, it can be, the expense can be reimbursed, or the expenses that were incurred, in this case administratively, can be reimbursed back to the general fund?
Is it potentially problematic when the TIF ever goes away, that if half of the administrator's expenses now need to be absorbed by the general fund?
You're already absorbing it.
You're already paying for it.
Would you readjust it?
It's a good reimbursement.
It's a way to, to credit back or get back.
Yes. So if you have no expenses in the TIF, you can't reimburse anything from the TIF. So the idea is to spend as much as possible to the TIF, so that instead of getting four dollars and sixty cents per hundred, you're getting twelve dollars and forty-three cents per hundred of payback because you're pulling in that improvement value from the county and city. Those of you that are, I guess, quite versed in the TIF, essentially, there's a total local tax amount. It's a combination of the college, the school, the villages of Grand County. We take that total amount, it's the total of the way inside the TIF. So it's a starting value of a million dollars. The other entities essentially waive their right to collect on anything above that million. So if we make public investments in infrastructure, parks and rec facilities, whatever those are, and the value increases to two million dollars, those other entities still collect the tax on the first million, but we now collect one hundred percent of all the taxes allowable in that district on the second million in order to fund the infrastructure that we put in to create growth, which assumably everybody benefits from.
And that's just for the period of time that the TIF is in effect. Eventually, it goes away.
Yeah.
How many more years do we have left on our TIF?
Eighteen.
We extended it one time, maybe not, so...
Yeah.
Can we extend it again?
I don't know, getting a little bit of what we were thinking about is, I don't recall. John, I think we're out on that. I can research it.
I thought, for some reason, I thought we could extend it once, and then while we get closer to the end of the...
There's a three-year, well, standing out my head, there's a three-year extension that's potential, but I don't want it.
Yeah. What happens to the TIF when we come up against the end of it?
It's something you've got to pay for. It's something you've got to pay for, it has to be done if...
So a lot of payback's going to be paid if we don't get some development.
We're getting development.
Ideally, what should have happened...
It's what Garrett's project is, there's other projects in the works.
What should have happened is, you should have bought all the properties that you bought and then enacted the TIF. Instead, what happened was you enacted the TIF and then opportunities came up to buy those properties, and so when you bought them, you took them off the tax rolls. You were going for years, I think from two thousand and eight until just this past year, to get back to zero, and now, as of last year, you've got four thousand dollars in net revenue coming in courtesy of the TIF. Good news is, as President Lino mentioned, the Garrett project goes in when development occurs on the old school. Hopefully, Mr. Cashperson sitting back there will have a lovely fifty million dollar facility on his property some day.
John, good, it's still a question?
It'll hopefully turn positive.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Look, we need a motion.
So moved.
For a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Item number six, consider a motion to accept the recommendation of finance committee to reallocate several capital reserve funds by adopting resolution two ninety-five oh eight one nine one four. Ms. Carrie, administer it.
I will turn this one over to our finance director of the road system. So this is all discussed in finance and is just moving a lot of items around.
Well, you need, you need the help of this color-coded spreadsheet. Can we have that up here?
Yes.
I guess I would just...
Item thirty-six.
By saying, what finance did, we had several items in different reserve lines. Some were cleanup, some were allocating funds from one, taking out one reserve, putting towards various projects. The whole, the whole idea was to fund as, as much as we could from our current line items.
Current reserves.
For reserves towards these projects.
Well, if it, if it can turn around. Okay, from the board report, item one refers to the column added in two thousand and fourteen, twenty-one thousand, twenty-one, twenty-one. The, that's the proceeds of the sale of one more, which we want to apply to...
So that's under parks, the parks equipment line?
Correct. Parks equipment line.
Okay, what is it?
We want to use that to purchase, to help the purchase of another piece of equipment. That left a negative bound, even with that, there was a negative balance in the parks equipment line of four ninety-five eighty-one, which we want to merge with or cover by the line that's titled various parks projects, which is about three lines above that. That's the first item. Do you want to take these separately or all together?
Separately. Is everybody...
All right.
No.
We're also, okay, the last thing in that item then is that we want to use, there was money allocated for baseball field improvements, I think it was a driveway, a couple of years ago, and there was, they, they did it less expensively than they had thought. So there's three thousand four hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-two, seventy cents left there. We would like to also merge that with various parks projects. So these, these two lines, parks equipment and baseball field improvements, will be zeroed out and will have a various parks project line item totaling a little over twenty-nine thousand. So that's item one. Are you going to do separate motions on this, or...
No, I, I want the explanation of the law. We'll do one motion for that.
Okay, that's item one. Item two is the remainder, refers to the remainder in the paperless meeting fund, which is shown in a light peach color as a negative...
Twenty-two, eighty-three, thirty.
Paperless meeting computers. Do you see, are you finding that? Twelve seventy-one is the number.
Somehow, like, there's miles.
Oh, thank you. Okay. And we want to merge that or zero that out and apply that reserve money to the information technology upgrades, which is about four lines down from there.
Where'd you get your twelve twenty-one?
No, the twelve seventy-one.
Twelve seventy-one, there are numbers in the, on the left column.
Oh, 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 column, I thought you were talking about the amount, and I was going to say, I'm not reading that amount.
Just trying to help you find it, okay? So that's item two. Item three, we earn interest on the stewardship grant, and that's shown in blue down, see, down, right there. The total through June was just under twenty thousand, nineteen-nine ninety-five sixty-seven.
Since inception, correct?
We want to use that interest, what?
Since inception, since you've received the funds.
What did you say?
Since you've received the funds.
Since...
The stewardship funds.
Since the start.
I mean, that's not a year or that.
Yes, since, that is correct.
Say that for declared reasons, people don't think we got that right of a term.
No, no, no. Since we received the funds several years ago. And we also earned interest on the money that the marina pays back. The marina borrowed eight hundred and fifty thousand of the stewardship grant, and the interest that's been repaid is amounts to, no, I'm sorry, not the interest. The, the loan amount that's been repaid is seventy thousand six six six. So those two together, we want to use for the beach project up above. It's also in blue, right there. It's ninety thousand six sixty-one seventy-five. Okay?
The thinking there was that grant money was, was borrowed to the marina, and the grant money originally was intended for the beach project, so as the borrow comes back, the payment comes back from the marina, put it back in the fund for the beach.
Okay. Fourth item, we did a lot of street work on Scandia Road and Woodcrest, and we had...
What's the line item?
Line item is oh four oh eight, the third one from the top. We, we had at the end of, at the beginning of, of two thousand and fourteen, we had eighty-eight... We, we had at the end of, at the beginning of, of 2014, we had 88,606 in that fund. We spent that on those two projects with the help of an L-Warps grant of 15,000. We ended up with a deficit here of 7,722 and some change.
But also got you some paving on the left side.
Yes.
Tiny bit of...
That came out of the, that came out of the general fund. So the, we want to, or the Finance Committee recommends that we use cumulative proceeds from computer aids in the TIF. These are state aids for computers. It's a personal property tax revenue. And that we take the remainder that we need for the streets from the election machine replacement, which is line 1165. These are all in a violet color. And because the election machine replacement, it's still not certain when that will happen, but the earliest would be the end of 2015. And Dave can talk to you a little more about that because he has information from the county.
Well, I spoke to the county clerk and asked her what the probability was that that would be completed yet this year, and she said it's been three years that the company's been trying to get certified by the Federal Election Commission to use these particular machines. It hasn't occurred yet, and they're anticipating once it gets certified by the federal, that also has to be certified by Wisconsin. And currently, it's been three years and nothing's been certified yet. My understanding is that there's two machines that are currently in the process, and originally they thought it would be sometime this year. In a conversation with her last week, she said she didn't think it would happen this year.
What's the cost on one of those?
Fifty-five hundred dollars.
Okay. Cost though?
New machine.
For a new machine. Scott asked what the cost was for a new machine.
So how many do we need?
No, actually, well, what Jill is telling us now is that it would be probably under 8,000, but the county pays half.
Our portion, right.
So we would need, once this happens, we would need about $4,000. And we're leaving a little over 2,500 in there.
Yeah, for one machine. How many machines do you need for that?
We have one.
Got a lot of voters in this department.
So I think that covers it.
I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the Finance Committee to reallocate several projects' reserve funds as presented.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any other administrative transfers?
Yes.
Item seven, item eight won't occur tonight. Item nine, reporting county activities from County Supervisor Dave Leo. Like the village, the county is now headlong into the budget process. There was both a finance meeting yesterday and an administrative meeting today, topic of discussion with personnel costs and new personnel positions. Currently, and this is just part of the process, it's not where it's going to end up hopefully, but currently, based on what departments have submitted for budgets and the capital improvement projects that have been approved at this point in time, the county is currently about $960,000 over last year's budgeted levy amount. And the, I believe the totals, tax levy allowed, based on the net new construction, I think was 0.43%, was about 122,000, 123,000. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done on the budget, but that's kind of like the first flush-through, first time budgets are all pulled together from all the departments in the capital improvement plan. And so for the next couple of months, that's what the county will be engrossed in, is coming up with the budget. But at the moment, that's the number that everybody's going...
What was that figure again?
I don't know. The tax amount, the budget amount was about 960,000.
960,000?
Approximately.
Maybe I'll say that.
You just say a lot.
They're over budget.
More than you have.
Couple of the items that are issues within the budget are EMS has asked for six new paramedic and ambulance to staff an additional unit in the Sturgeon Bay area. It turns out that there's a number of times when there's double calls, and there's a backup unit is not able to respond, there's not a second backup, it has to come from someplace else, just like up in Sister Bay. If there's a call here in Sister Bay, and then there's a second call simultaneously or later, another unit has to respond from another area. Okay? And that's an issue within the Sturgeon Bay area, there's, I guess, about 140 times in the last year, there were simultaneous calls or calls that came in with minutes of each other. And, you know, let me give you an example. Because, I believe this is because of state law, and don't quote me in this one. If Shane falls and breaks his arm and he calls 911 and dispatch an ambulance to him, and two minutes later, somebody calls in with a heart attack victim, they have to complete the run to Shane, they can't stop him and redirect to the heart attack. So the second individual has to wait till a second unit is staffed and arrived and is dispatched, and that can come from the north, the south, wherever. And based on the number of calls, they feel there's enough demand to staff and put a second unit in place. It takes six paramedics to staff 24/7 to work out the shifts. So six people is quite expensive. Takes an additional ambulance, they're taking two ambulances and retrofitting them to bring them up to the current codes and standards. So that's a lot of money. There is a large continuing tower project. Again, our first responders, fire, and EMS. The last couple of years, they put towers up in a number of locations because of what's called narrowbanding, so that it could be communicated to. And now they have to run fiber and communication lines to these towers so they can work. That's about another two and a half million dollar project that has to go in the capital fund. In addition to that, every year, the county tries to do between 17 and 19 miles of road reconstruction and road repair to keep them, so over a 20 or 25 year, year, period of time before they get deteriorated too far, they've all been reconstructed or redone. That's about a two and a half million dollars every year that they have not borrowed for. They do it out of the general fund or the general levy every year. So those are all pressures that are being put on the budget this year that have to be worked through and figured out. So that's primarily what the county's been focused on. Any questions? Review of the financial statements in consideration of a motion to approve the monthly bills.
Okay, you have a total of 436,000, 87.06 to be approved. Are there questions about the individual bills?
Page 40 of the Zoom, page two on the village bills, pavilion signs, 2126. Is that for those black marquees that are in the pavilion, or is there a different sign that...
On the superior.
Page 40 of the Zoom.
Yep, you said what line?
Well, it's Village, page two, and it's Pavilion Signs. I think it's down by the bottom.
DJG Sales.
That one may be coded wrong, John, for that dollar amount that looks like performance equipment, not that. However, the way the sums are done with the contractor bid it out, that could be the case. We could look into it.
I, I remember the bill. It said...
Sales, okay. Yeah, they did it as a lump sum amount. So if you had a $2,000 fund here, we did a direct purchase to save the sales tax. That looks high.
Village Bills, page 39 on the Zoom, down near the bottom, the repair on the track list. I think of the last parks meeting...
What's the, what's the name of the company that...
Bruce Municipal Equipment. I think the last parks meeting we were in, he was still investigating that. What did they find on that? Any idea?
That was something you guys talked about with the budget and the, the last budget process was to add this thing, send off and spend up to $10,000 to have it gone through and redone. So did he...
What did they find, I guess?
So we threw, what we asked for doing was go through and replace any parts that would be subject to wear, rubbers, gaskets, plexos, anything like that.
I think at our last meeting, he, they hadn't responded to them, so that's...
So at this point, it's kind of refurbished with the expectation that hopefully it'll be good for several years.
Stay together.
Yes. So for a thousand dollar piece of equipment, so it's been 59,000 or whatever it is.
Yep.
That's a better number than what was authorized. On the Zoom 44, Village, page six, Village Building inspected? Did we get inspected?
Well, we, I had the inspector get through since there would be no other independent inspection.
Village 48 on the Zoom, True Green, did we cancel them or are we doing that next year?
That would be a subject for Parks discussion and for budget, but no, they are not canceled.
Nothing was done this year. Anybody else? I'll make a motion to approve the bills in the amount of 436807.86.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
If you look at page 48 on there, 72018. Page 48 on the Zoom, if you look at the page...
I don't have a Zoom.
I'm sorry. Page 10 in the Village Report.
Page 10 in the Village. Okay, which line?
72018. Make another stop, my bad.
The financial reports. Julie, Anna, you want to say anything?
This is through June 30th. By the time we get the final bills in for June, it's close to the end of July, so this was the earliest that I could give this to you. I just, I, I put that actual tax amount received because John had asked for that one year. If you look at page six of this report, you've got to go further, yep. The administration section of the general fund, there's an illustration here of what's happening with the TIF admin reimbursement. A little further.
We said page six is the non-page six.
59 on the 59. I can reference where it's placed.
Fifty...
59.
Yeah, right there, okay. If you look at the bottom, the personnel section, just above the word personnel, you'll see TIF admin reimbursement and utility admin reimbursement. And if you look to the far right, you'll see how high a percentage there is on the TIF admin reimbursement, 202%. And that's an illustration of what we did, why we asked for a budget amendment. Okay? So now the budget will be adjusted so that that will come into line. And then if we go... Keep going to the TIF page is what I need. This is still general fund.
66.
Okay, there you are. Little further down, expenses, okay. I had to handwrite in postage. I, I need, I need our software people to help me get these reports to line up. But the third item, the two items under postage, Village Administration, you see that saying And that's, that's the other side of that entry that we're going to be adjusting with our, with our budget amendment. I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Any other questions? Discussion regarding matters replaced on a future agenda referred to committee official or employee.
I have one item to bring up just as an education point for all of us. Oftentimes, we get requests from board members or committee members to take an action on something or research something, and I guess what I'd like to communicate is that oftentimes that's attached to a cost. So we do our best to accommodate those. However, we do have to engage from time to time engineering firms or legal services to be able to fulfill that request. I just ask that as you all make those requests, you keep in mind that it's not something that's just built in with the village's general hour total if it goes outside of mine or a staff member's scope. We have to be outside entities to be able to fulfill requests.
Future agenda items, you're talking about, that we could really use the alternate position building in the committee. For that, you have them. I would like to discuss them. I know we still need to do something with the SBAA, and I'd like to talk to both Nora and Shane. I have an idea for that, too. Anyone else?
Just an FYI, beach bid will be in and on between.
This month?
Yes, sir, this month. We have nine sets of plant holders out right now, which is, I think, three more than we had last time. That's a good thing. We have some local interest there. As a tangent to that, Parks recommended some time ago that we investigate the possibility of a sledding hill up the sports complex. We'll meet with Pat Hockers and begin to discuss that. The background on that is that under the last bid for the beach project, 7,000 cubic materials of cubic yard material has to come out of the park area to facilitate development of the beach instead of spending 25 to 30,000 to have that haul all the way down to Green Bay. Why not create a wintertime amenity out of it and build a sledding hill up of these sports complexes? The site that we're looking at that makes the most sense is sort of between Autumn Court and the baseball field and taking advantage of the natural topography there. So hopefully, I'll have a call set some back from Hockers on that sometime in the next week or so to take the call.
What does a bid come in at?
I won't have it until the 20th.
It's tomorrow.
The 20th, yeah, it's tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Is that on the same side as the utility plant?
Yes.
So over there by where they have their garage?
The, think about...
Baseball field, some baseball field.
On the backside of baseball field.
On the other side.
There's sort of already a slope on one side. We can create a chute on the other side, and then they'll in the background and bring it towards Woodcrest.
Oh, okay.
And then put a stop build in, so kids don't slide out of the little grid.
That'd be a good idea.
Oh, come on.
We just want to make it as steep as all 17.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, committee reports. Does anybody need a five-minute break? Good to go?
Good to go.
Admin, that's not Matt. Gashor Oversight, that's not Pat.
Well, we discussed it. Matt, we discussed it now, but that was the major issue. There were a couple of things that came up with DOT that now are all.
A little wet.
Yeah.
Thanks, Ken. Close to by ways.
Minutes in your packet are from July. I covered those last month.
Thanks, Denise.
Covered those last month. We had a meeting here Thursday the fourteenth, basically just reviewed some RFPs for website upgrades. That is about it.
Thank you. DC CD.
You have packets from July fourteenth. I covered that last month. The latest meeting was Monday, the eleventh. We toured the Boys and Girls Club of Door County and had a presentation from Julie Davis. And just a couple went over some strategic work plans, a meeting.
Economic development.
Had a little bit.
Finance. You know what you're there, but.
Yep, you have seen the fruits of our labor.
Maybe.
Made everybody mad.
Yeah.
Oh, just wait. I wanted to make a comment that they were all, well, we'll be fine with raising the taxes. I wanted to so bad to say, just remember that. About two months.
Player.
You know, I don't know that there's minutes in here. We just had a meeting. And like you say, the op, the proposed, what they're asking for is a one-point-seven percent increase, which then that affected the village, because the village only pays a third of that, Liberty Grove pays two-thirds, is under $2,000. There's four or five items that were, you know, it's two-hundred here, two-hundred there. There's no large increases projected.
One of the new programs they're talking about is a community-based CPR, so everybody can get in.
They already did that, didn't they? The mayor started a class in July for CPR.
But yeah.
Yeah.
Well, they may, there may be like a five or ten dollar fee. Yeah, they, they sent a letter out and collected $9,000. And they've, they have put, that was one of the, they, they added $500 to the budget for that. They're expecting, they've had four classes so far. They've got to staff the classes. They've got the equipment. They know how to do it now, but they have to staff the classes.
Think it'd be a good idea.
Yeah.
They're wanting the first aid and CPR or just CPR?
CPR and, and they're also going to pull businesses that have defibrillators and make sure they understand how to use them properly and get people certified on that.
Great.
Yeah.
Do you have any idea when we might have a copy of the budget? Are you still working on it?
Yeah, and I asked Chris yesterday, I think our meeting was just, what's today, Tuesday? Our meeting was yesterday. Okay, it was just yesterday. I did ask him for an electronic copy that we could get it to the board and apparently I didn't get that today, but I could.
Soon.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Fire District, school tour has not met, historical society, our liaison is, forgot about that.
Just kidding.
They did a, they did a meeting this month. Things are going pretty well at Corner of the Past. They're looking at doing a program or two for children, like soap making and some other types of things that get kids involved and all, some hands-on stuff. And I guess they were kind of happy they don't have to worry about moving the information center yet or budgeting for what they want to do with that or not do with that, so.
I'm going to give a random suggestion for you to bring up. Back where I'm from, there's a, one of our former governors, Charles B. Hancock, his birthplace, they preserved it. One of the coolest things I've ever seen, you guys being in Wisconsin, is churning butter, right? Basically, the kids just go to town. Churning butter on the back porch while we're not.
Sure. Or making ice cream, we do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Meechley. Get the kids, get the kids to it.
Yeah. The other thing they just talked about is they're getting like, they want to get a sign because they do tours and evidently people get all confused as to where they're going to go on a land. So yeah, they're doing that with plan commission.
Okay. The library building, that liaison is, Kathy, that'll end up being you. To that one. Marina, Marina Fest.
Marina, the message we ran there from the last meeting we covered, mainly we just had a meeting last week, the main plan, Marina Fest, is we did, we see the gap, uh, grant for the public restrooms for fifty percent, I think, which is.
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand dollars.
Marina Fest, we just finalized all the grounds, plans and everything. Unfortunate news is helicopter will not be at Marina Fest. They had called us and they had booked someone else after offering it to us. They tried as hard as they could to contact helicopter manufacturers, other people. They gave me a ton of numbers. I've been calling everywhere from the last week and everybody's booked. Positive note, we do have like four or five helicopter tour people that are interested and want to come in and do it at their expense. And, you know, the same agreement that we had set up with this individual. Don't know how it happened, don't know why it fell through the loops, but next year we will book in January and make sure it's here. After putting that advertisement out, I know it's going to be a big loss. So if anybody knows a helicopter pilot, let me know.
Shadon, it's been the hotter balloons a little while back and tethered flight, one of the lit downs is that most of the folks in Wisconsin don't do tethered flight. So we really stopped investigating. I'm sure if we can find somebody.
That was actually a suggestion of one of the helicopter pilots that I called. He said that there are hot air balloonists that will do that and do tethered flights, and possibly do tethered flights. And that might be a stand-in for the helicopter. I was kind of disappointed because from what I understood, he was like, we want to be here, just give me the yes. And in the, about the week interim of discussing it with people that need to be discussed, it fell through. So unfortunately, it is what it is and.
You know, I think Tim Hallbrook used to have a helicopter. He may know somebody else that, I don't know if anybody in Ephraim still has one.
I don't know. You know, he comes in every day. I'll be there tomorrow morning.
I would ask him, he may know somebody.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, the publicity is there for them. They will make money. So it's just fill in that gap now if we can. So unfortunate, but. Yeah, it really was. I really tried hard. I mean, I, I spent a lot of hours on the phone talking to pilots and they're fun people to talk to, I'll tell you, but it's fun stories.
Oh, we only crashed in this one.
Okay, Parks.
So I'll make one declare for it. I know we discussed a lot of parks with regard to DOT. You all are aware that DOT is acquiring right away down the length of facial drive. They're going to be acquiring in the point one-one acres of waterfront park. And because federal monies were utilized to acquire that property, they have to replace in kind with the same number of acres, the same dollar value of that property. So over the last several months, staff and DOT have worked to identify some properties and really came up short on willing sellers for comparable properties somewhere not village-owned. So what the Parks Committee finally came down to was a decision to recommend the Helms parcel as a secondary with the parcel beside the fire station here being the primary to get as much of that as we could. Couple of factors went into DOT's decision, which is also influenced by DNR's approval or not. DNR looked at a map and said, you have two issues with the parcel beside the fire station. One is that it's almost completely inundated with wetlands. Number two, you already have it zoned as Parks and Recreation. So you're telling us that we're going to approve a Parks and Recreation parcel, which are then going to turn into a Parks and Recreation parcel. So they completely kicked that parcel out of something that we could use. And now we're focusing on the Mill Road site. They've got the appraisal going on that. Their hope is that it will appraise the full dollar value of what they need to expend, which is, let's just call it $380,000. So what will end up happening is if that parcel appraises at what is three-eighty-three, some change, then they will write us a check for that amount. They will purchase the property from us. They will run it through a paperwork process and then give us the property back. We will have to have a plan in place for improvements or lack thereof on that property. We'll discuss that meeting with parking in that area. DOT has expressed some willingness to negotiate some parking improvements there. As a corollary to that, if it doesn't appraise in at that dollar amount, they'll still have to spend that amount somewhere. The backup site for that is up at our sports complex in Kirkwill, Seate Orchard or some part of this farm up there. So we'd be expanding our recreational opportunities into when they grow outside of recreation.
And if we don't want to allow either one, then it ends up going outside of the village of Sister Bay and they will buy it someplace else in Door County.
Yep.
Any chance of getting part of the Braun property that we could use for parking?
We looked at the, it's presumably, I don't know, the ice cream factory property located between the petrol shops and the Willsey property and the Green Building. We actually asked about the Willsey building and that found it was unwilling to sell the Green Building to use as a visitor center or something. They didn't want to part with it. The ice cream factory, they were willing to sell, but that also pulls away from our Tiff district, a property that would have value for us there. So not necessarily the highest invest use. Parks considered that. I don't know about the decisions about what to recommend.
So Helms, we're talking about.
I'm sorry. What we had hoped was that some of the property here would be a portion of it. And then Mill Road site would be a portion of it there, maybe half, three quarters of it. Because the econ development actually showed like one-third of it is available for sale. The other two-thirds would be parking. And when they kicked out this site, then the secondary option was, Parks agreed was to move it down there. And now it's a case of if it comes back appraises or not. I see any reason why it won't appraise at that. We do have.
Should appreciate more than that.
So hopefully.
Are we talking about the property where the old?
Where the.
The college.
Where what?
Where the.
Where the.
Where the brick parking lots.
Helms.
Left hand side.
Behind grasses.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay, thank you.
The only other thing, and I know it's a little late to bring this table, since they decided to kick that out. There's opportunity for parking right underneath fifty-seven there where in the Gateway Park. We had talked about that when they bring that down, that we, at the bottom of there where that comes in, they would be willing to maybe put in some parking.
John, I'm not totally out. You guys are okay. We're going with it. This will be a negotiation process and we could still negotiate out, hey, we want you to pave some of this up here. They just can't purchase that property from us. It's still ours.
If you're willing, it sounded like they were willing to do something to help parking-wise. So even if they bought the Helms property, if we turn around and have them do some of the parking, that would be not an expense to us. We'd be able to keep potentially more of the money. Or negotiate other spots to help do parking.
Still have a problem with the fact that we're picking a praying piece of property and turning it into a parking lot.
And does that then mean it's a parking lot perpetuity?
Or forever until you decide to do another six F conversion, which will mean until you decide to combine another property somewhere.
You can do whatever you want with it under Parks and Rec. Doesn't have to be parking.
Yeah.
But it has to be.
But it has to be developed as park and rec or something that substantiates the use of park and rec.
Okay, the idea of potentially selling that in conjunction with other surrounding properties, you could do that anymore.
You.
Without converting it back.
Wife will be able to do that anyway because you're one road configuration, two, the other property. You've got that one parcel that was just situated for an eight thousand square foot building and that was it.
And I would think, I would hope to see if that, if this is what happens to that parcel, that whatever we do there, yeah, if there's parking, okay, fine, but we make it conducive to other events on that parcel, not just parking.
It, it could be the side of your restroom facilities. You need to develop restroom something strong. I want to talk about that.
Long ways away from the beach.
Across the road.
I guess I'm more concerned about, I won't get, it's a parks issue. Personnel.
Has not met.
Plan Commission, should be minutes in there. Some of that we took care of tonight. Communications Technology has not met, was deferred. SBAA.
There was a meeting this month. There was a pretty likely discuss, or discussion at the beginning on the alcohol licensing. Husby's was very concerned because the time changed. That was tied to the permits, so the liquor licenses. And so they had some discussion on that. They said they will be at the meeting next year when we do liquor licenses.
What do they mean the time changed?
Uh, they said last year, they said, yeah, this is what I, what they'd said, that last year it was eleven o'clock for the end of bands and that we put it back to ten-thirty.
Yeah, no, they'd be mistaken. It's always been ten-thirty with eleven o'clock, everybody's. But noise was ten-thirty.
Yeah, but.
Last year's and it was that.
It was eleven o'clock for noise?
Yes.
And then eleven-thirty to be inside?
And back with the permits.
Yeah, it was changed last year. And they had no idea that it may be changed back and booked all their bands accordingly. And now have tried to go back and readjust everything and they were quite upset that they had no idea this was being considered to change.
Well, they shouldn't be very upset. They've been playing till eleven all summer long.
Well, they got, they got told not to.
Just for some background on this, I issued a citation, it was a warning citation, since this has come up.
That's when they showed up at the meeting.
I was in on a, I believe it was a Friday and had a conversation with two of the managers there and said, look, you need to knock it off. It's after ten-thirty. The next day, I'm getting calls at eleven o'clock at night because they're out there playing again. So I wouldn't have too terrible a much in feeling.
Well, as I recall, I thought I brought this up at the time and I was told no, I was wrong. In June, when we talked about the thing, I said, I'm quite sure last year we changed it and it was eleven o'clock. And that was after quite a conversation. We had all the businesses here, Husby's was here, in Maple Bluff Side, they were all here. We had that discussion and they all kind of agreed, okay, eleven o'clock.
Right. And their concern was they think that Sister Bay is growing business-wise downtown. I think that this is helping. This isn't twenty-year-old kids that are showing up either to listen. They said, it's like forties and fifties. It's a reasonable crowd that's out there. They realize some people don't like the noise because they want to go to bed earlier, but it's like, I guess, two nights a week, I think they said, for basically July and August.
And I'm getting people telling me that it's louder than it's ever been. There's been, there's been more complaints this year at ten-thirty than there was all of last year at eleven.
I've been.
I don't know what the difference is.
I've been shocked because at the last, I noticed the last one was ten-fifty-five. I mean, I am not close by any stretch of the imagination. It was keeping my wife and I up at five to eleven about two weeks ago. I'm going, what is going on? And I talked to the Lindenbergs. They've got three small kids. I mean, they're on Bluff Side and they are, you know, they'll never say anything. They're the nicest, sweetest people ever who went to school. That is way loud for small children.
Well, maybe that has to be that decibel discussion that we're going to have.
Of going around and gathering data and there's, you know, to look at, I won't launch too far into it here, but there's a difference between momentary noise burst of a car nearby, in which case I've gotten, you know, eighty-six or eighty-eight decibels in recorded sound all over the village. It's the sustained level. So at midnight, when I was at Husby's, I think it was past Friday, and recorded there, when the door shut and they had Apple by Music inside, it's fifty, fifty-five decibels right at the intersection. However, as soon as the door opens up, it cranks up to seventy-six decibels, right? So there's a big difference in people going in and out. In other municipalities, they've done things such as, hey, it's your noise. You need to take care of that. You need to put in a double set of doors.
I can see it.
And the next one catches it. Plan Commission will take this up in the next meeting for consideration.
And I would have to second Pat. I mean, I, I don't know if you hear it or not, but I mean, loud as day. And we're up the bluff, behind condos.
I mean, we're a half a mile or more.
And your house, too. Like a lot of Strabber or something.
And I, you know, I lived at the coast like two years. And then, not last summer. I mean, to the point where I'm singing the song along. My wife's annoyed. I thought you said it's ten-thirty. I'm like, yeah, shit. It's loud.
And also, I mean, I don't, it doesn't bother me at all because as soon as I go into my house, my AC's on right now. So my windows are closed, so it doesn't bother me, but.
But if you're on Bluff Side or in Maple.
Yeah.
I couldn't, I can't even.
I live right there at it. I've got a two-year-old. My two-year-old sleeps. But then again, she sleeps through a lot of stuff, so I don't know how good the metric that is. I get calls regularly from the two transient lodging facilities there and they're.
And they sit in at Maple will always be a problem because they don't have AC. So their windows are always open, you know.
I think a question of whose problem is it. If, if I had a business and I emitted noxious fumes and it made you all sick, right, you all would say, Zeke, you have to control the noxious fumes. It's a similar situation here that we all have right to enjoy the airspace and if somebody's vibrating the air molecules around my ears, right, that creates a problem. Yeah.
And then they, there's also been starting to look at a, some type of grand opening for the beach next year. Denise Burdo actually said that she would help with that. And concerts in the parks have been going pretty well considering the weather. When Unity played, they, they had a terrific night. That was, that was amazing.
Probably 1,500, 1,000, 1,500 people there. I got some good shots of probably those. SBA, I think, had probably the best night they've ever had in concession sites.
Yeah, with $1,000 or so that night.
Wow, great.
Yeah. Makes up for some of the bad weather and all the other ones that people aren't hanging around because it's too cold.
Yeah, that shows what's possible.
And the other thing is they're just starting to plan a fall dinner.
As you have conversations about concerts and what, I know this hasn't gone through Parks Committee, but coordinating our market and the concerts in the park, concerts in the park vary. Some of them start at three, some of them start at seven. I guess what I'd like to see is some uniform start time. Let's pick six or whatever that will be. They all start at six. Successful downtown programs, it's a standard time, a standard day of the week all the way through as opposed to a variable thing that changes the number of ads we have to have. It creates confusion amongst our radio stations, same with our newspaper readers, just for advertising reasons alone. I think it's better to consolidate in a little single time when we do something in the farmer's market. So we'll start that in town in the first.
I can bring a suggestion to them and see where it goes. They did have some concern how the farmer's markets are going, that people can't seem to see them or with it being located there, the cars are all parked in front and they've talked to some of the vendors and it sounds like it's not been going very well.
It's definitely a challenge over there.
Visibility and, yeah.
One of the things that occurred and might be getting into the nitpicky, SBA decided to place their banner over the farmer's market sign because they felt that the concert took precedent over the farmer's market, so hung it directly over top of it. We've now resolved that, but.
That's good. But you know that sign is hard to read when you're driving by, that farmer's market one, because the times are kind of a lighter color and smaller and it is hard to pick it up.
The other thing is it's confusing because you still have farmer's market going on at the top shelf.
Pick it up, yeah.
And, you know, it's, you're not sending a consistent message there.
Well, you can't control that one, though. That's nothing the village or SBA can do about that.
Yeah, that's a private.
They're not affiliated.
I mean, you can regulate it.
That's where we always had it.
You can regulate it from Plan Commission and I'd go back and look at the rules on it. If you guys are inclined to just crush it out of existence.
No.
No, no, no.
But I think that's the right type of thing.
I think we need to relook at farmer's market concept, where and when and how we're doing it.
Yeah, they were, they had thought that the Braun property might be a lot more visible for traffic going down the street, to be able to know that's going on, at least so it's established. That was one of the suggestions that SBA.
Teen Center, that's not met. Tourism Zone.
Tourism Zone last month was Executive Board. Our next meeting is this Thursday.
We know the results of that one.